Yeah, it's 6:30. I'll call the meeting in order. Um, first order of business is any additions or deletions?
No, no, no additions.
Okay. Approval of select board minutes of eight, seven. Comments or concerns?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from August 7th, 2023.
Full second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Pay orders. Currently have a pay order for $11,383.45 for August 22nd. Questions and concerns on that?
And there's no additions to this this evening? This is the final figure?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the pay orders of as of August 22nd, 2023, and now $11,383.45.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Road Commissioner's report. Was Phil coming tonight or?
Holden needs to answer him, so.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Holden did call and said, you know, they tried to do a crushed gravel improvement around his driveway, but it didn't work. So I think there's mixed feeling about what's causing the water. Charlie thinks it's coming down this driveway, but I don't know.
Okay. So do we just table that?
Yeah, I guess we table that for now.
I think so.
Are you folks here for the street naming? Yeah, we can discuss that.
Should we wait on Phil on the other two items? The Creek Road Bridge and the town garage flood damage?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can table it for now.
So table those. Tabled. Tabled. Onto 1125 Route 7.
You get to speak to it or?
I don't know. I don't know what we're supposed to do.
So you're requesting Deer Run Lane?
Yes.
Yeah, we did speak with Dale. Davenport, she's the 911 coordinator. She did say that the numbers that you requested cannot-
Oh, I just threw those in for example. I've just, the name, I don't care what their number.
Okay.
Anybody's thoughts on it?
I would think if you're okay to go with the proposed numbers from Dale.
Yeah.
I think that was the big issue, the big walk was the numbers. And if you're okay with the numbers.
No, she didn't propose actual numbers yet, though. She just was giving guides.
Right, right.
Who would go and do the measurements?
They would. Dale and Eric.
They are, okay.
Yep.
Did you do that the other day?
No.
Oh.
They mentioned that they had.
Okay.
I don't really have any objections to it. I would add the condition that you folks pay for the street sign?
Oh, yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay. I'm good with that and.
I'm not sure. Well, I can get a quote on the street sign and then it would also require a post. I talked to Charlie. We don't have any breakaway posts there, so.
So we'd need a sign and a sign?
Sign and a post.
Would we have to pay for the 911 coordinator's work?
No, that's all they're all volunteering.
Oh, okay.
So it'd just be the street sign-
So it'd just be for the street sign and the post for the sign?
And whatever freight that would be. That could be a little expensive, though, so we'll just get a price for it.
Okay. Okay.
So probably should have a motion to change the.
Okay. So I make a motion to let Elizabeth Blaisel and Ira Frederick have Wallingford E. 911 go and number the road to a number for Deer Run Lane and that Elizabeth Blaisel and Ira Frederick are willing to pay for the post and the sign if needed.
Second half.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. God our blessing.
Thank you.
Do you want me to stay for anything more?
You can stay if you'd like to, but.
I can fill the meeting here. It's Thursday night. Skip that one out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greater financing.
So I only obtained the one quote from Community Bank for $266,500. You asked for a seven-year loan. The rate is 4.93% with annual principal payments plus interest. I didn't bother with TD Bank last time. They were more and the state of Vermont, they only loaned up to $110,000 and they only accept applications in April and October, so.
Well, looks here, we did talk back when we were on the augmentation trust balance of maybe using some of that towards this purchase. So what's the feeling at this time?
I think we could still intend to do that, but we don't, won't have that money before the greater arrives.
Oh, okay.
And I did see your-
But we could still in the future talk about that.
Yes, I saw in the paperwork, there's no penalty if we pay the entire balance off at any point.
Okay.
If we decided to do that, so.
So do we need a motion to, for the loan?
Yes.
I make a motion that the town of Wallingford borrow $266,500 towards the purchase of the new greater.
Second half.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Now, I want to mention, we want to thank Jerry Reynolds for voluntarily mowing the transfer station property with his own tractor. Jane Quigley and Dennis DeHaim for mowing the walking pass and trimming out stone metals. And I also wanted to mention that Sandy has a 10-year anniversary this week.
We're not already banana.
Working for the town, so.
Why do we know that?
So.
Time goes fast, right?
So thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always go above and beyond, so.
Yes.
Public comments. You guys are here for flag football, so we're on to flag football.
Yes.
All right, yeah, we're just looking for permission to use the athletic field and the storage building back there. My plan is to use it a couple of days during the week and maybe one day on the weekend.
Okay.
You know, we'll be responsible for all the trash pickup and anything that we leave there. Obviously, we have a cleaner than when we arrive, so.
Okay, in the past, I know Art probably has already told you, but we had to get waivers-
Right.
-from people.
Yes, we, I'll-
Is there a certain form that you guys request for that waiver? Is that something the town has or?
I can send you what we used in the past.
Yeah, I've got it.
Okay, perfect.
I'll make sure to get it.
Perfect.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
We'll make sure that gets done and into Sandy.
Okay. Okay.
And do you have keys that you can give him?
Yes.
The shed and?
Shed, basically.
And the gate? Do you have a key to the gate, too?
I'll have to look.
Okay. So that's, I think I mentioned to you, Eric, we have to make sure the gate's secured.
For sure.
It swung open a year or so ago and hit a car and cost us $1,000.
In the past, we very, in the recent past anyway, we very rarely ever got back there with a vehicle. We just carried everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think we've used it in the last three years, at least.
We haven't in the last five, I think, five.
I don't know.
Is there going to be water that will flood this year?
No.
No, okay.
Not at this point.
Not at this point because, yeah.
I don't think.
I'll send you an email and with the rec committee's email address on it, so you can make sure everybody's on the same page and there's not too, too many things going on in the field. But I don't think it was ever a problem before. Well, she's on the rec committee, so. Perfect time, Shannon. He's doing, he'll be doing flag football. So I just said I would send them the rec committee info, make sure everything's coordinated. I don't think there's another sport going on at the same time as flag football, but just so everybody knows.
Yeah, I don't know if that area was damaged. I know Simeone sent out that email about the baseball field, but.
I think the area that we use for football was not damaged.
Yeah, and we talked about that.
Okay.
Some consensus is?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. As usual.
Thank you very much.
Yes, we will. Anytime. Thanks.
Thank you for our help.
Er, er. By the way, I don't know if you know, but-
You want to say?
I was just going to mention that we went down River Street and Creek Road on Friday with several members of Governor's Cabinet and met with several residents. Our attended emergency management director, Jim Bagnell, myself, and I think five or five members of the cabinet. It went really well. We went into several houses. The residents were fantastic. They really wanted to learn about where the gaps are in funding, in assistance, Green Mountain Power Utility Bills that are, used to be 100, now are 276 for people drying out their houses. But it went really well. The residents on Creek and River were very receptive. It was just a nice morning.
Yeah, it went well. And I, actually, we stood on the bridge and looked. Jim Bagnell and I looked at the river and one of the gentlemen that lived there happened to see us and came over and just looked at the river and the course of the river and what it was before apparently and what it is now. I really believe ANR needs to get out there and, and take a look at that thing and design something that protects those homes as much as they can.
Do you mean ANR right next to you?
Yeah, I'm here as a private citizen. I'm not here at work, but I'd be happy to talk another time.
Yeah, but, but.
But I am here to talk about River Road, ironically, or Creek Road. The new development that was just approved.
Oh, I don't know.
In the floodway. I mean, we have to stop making it worse if we're expecting to get out of this.
But anyway, that's, and so to me, for the future, that's a step that needs to be taken. And I let Kendall Smith know that, that that's the next thing to do. But I agree that the citizens appreciated us having some interest in it. They'll do something.
They're very, very honest and forthright about their concerns and their impacts on their homes. It was a very nice morning, a very interesting morning.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Ari.
All dancing lessons at the town hall.
Now, are you here for public comment?
Yes.
We did go through public comments, but it is before 7 o'clock?
Oh, I thought I got here in plenty of time.
Right, and typically.
No road commissioner tonight, so it's going faster.
Right, right. But we have somebody here for public comments now, so are we okay listening to public comments?
Suppose.
Yeah, so I just wanted to talk a little bit, and I am speaking just as a private citizen and as an ANR employee, about just our zoning in general and enforcement of our regulations and how things are being reviewed in town. And I've been concerned for a while, but this house that was just approved behind the houses that flooded, 10 feet from the top of the bank of the Otter Creek in the floodway, so not just the flood plain, it's the main conveyance of the channel, the floodway, has just made me really concerned about public safety and enforcement of our regulations.
So it's behind the channel?
It's behind the little triangle. And where the little triangle is on the corner of Creek and River.
Yes.
Behind that, so there's, I have the map if you want. I have copies of it. There's the house, there's two houses that were flooded the worst, I think. Like those two houses.
It would be by the rivers.
There actually on Creek Road, behind to the left. So there's like a river that comes in from, like where the-
Ruhr and Brook?
No, the ambulance service is. There's like an old sluice line from when that was all damped up and there was a reservoir there.
Okay.
So there's a river and then there's the Otter Creek and it's kind of in the corner of those two. I knew, I knew the post development. So I, you know, I heard about it a while ago and I was like, there's, there's no way that'll get approved. Who would approve that? And it did just get approved. And I had emailed, you know, the chair of the DRB a number of times expressing concerns about it not being more properly, about, you know, them not having like completed application materials and a number of things. And I really think that we need to do a lot more oversight of our zoning administrator and these boards. So one issue is that that whole neighborhood is also in the industrial zone. It's, I wrote an article, a letter to the editor in 2007 about this. But here we are in 2023 and we still have huge swaths of our town, math industrial, that the reason for that is beyond me. And there's not a single permitted use in the industrial zone. Everything has to go through conditional use review. And that development, as well as the other development that went through for a rental apartment, were not warned for being in the industrial zone. So it wasn't warned properly. You know, it was warned for a flood plain review, but there was no review for industrial zoning.
It's in an industrial zone?
Yeah, the whole neighborhood is in the industrial zone. Because it used to be employee housing for the true temporary property.
Okay. And it did not go through industrial zoning?
No. And neither did the other house. So yeah, there's three different permits that I'm aware of that have been issued in the industrial zone that were not reviewed for being in the industrial zone. There, the review for the flood hazard zone requires, you know, certain requirements for things to be like certified by professional engineers and, or architects and for plans to be reviewed that show like the elevations of the building, the floodproofing material, the, where the louvers are going to be, if they're going to close in the bottom floor. And that all has to be reviewed and certified by a professional engineer. And none of that was submitted. The applicant said that they didn't want to spend a lot of money until they had the permit. So they just waived all of that and said, oh, we'll get it later. So now a building can be built and, you know, 10 feet from the top of the banks, the Otter Creek, can any area that has now flooded devastatingly a number of times. And I think, you know, we as a community need to take some responsibility for putting people in hazard zones. Because we know what happens when they flood. They need to be rescued. They need help, requires public assistance. You know, there's people who are talking about buyouts. So are we going to buy out a house on that street and then also allow another house to be built? I mean, that doesn't seem like a good expense, like a use of public expenditures to be like, you know, let's consider buying out public money, one house, while we allow the property behind it to be developed right at the top of the bank of the Otter Creek. So I think there's a number of issues with like, like I said, the industrial zoning, the flood plain applications. You know, there's a number of issues with the application in general, like the application. In order to build the building in the floodway, our regulations require that they do a no-rise analysis, which basically is a modeling exercise where they put their development in, they plunk their development in, and they have to show that there's no change in the floodplain elevation. And they said that the building was going to be 24 by 30. And in order to get the number low enough, the consultant removed the berm, removed material that was up against the river. So they couldn't get the number right. So they said, okay, well, if we remove this material, can we get the number right? And they got .04 rise. So that was up to the town to determine if .04 was no rise. And, I mean, it's a rise, but they decided apparently that it was no rise. But then the permit isn't conditioned on removing the berm and the permit application was submitted for a 25 by 24 structure. So the building is larger than what the model was run on and the berm that is supposed to be removed is not even mentioned in the review process or the permit as a condition. Yeah, there's just, I mean, I have to go on.
Do you?
Oh, and the minutes, too, like, you know, the minutes haven't been posted in a timely manner for the planning commission and the DRB for a long time. And when the minutes were finally posted from this DRB meeting, it just said that it had been approved. You know, the, the application was approved and that was like in June, but it didn't say what any of the conditions were. So we didn't, you know, I just came in today to see like what the conditions were on this permit. None of that was listed in the minutes. And like the minutes are supposed to have like that kind of information about like what was reviewing, what was decided. They're supposed to be posted within five days and they rarely are. And I usually have to like ask for them. And I understand things happen, but it's a pretty consistent issue. And then there's also the driveway issue. So I looked up the driveway.
Hold on one second. There's a lot of information-
Yeah.
-in a very short amount of time. I've been taking notes. I know I'm missing a ton of stuff here. Do you have something written out that you want to submit?
Yeah, I can submit something.
We could accept something submitted, couldn't we?
I think we're accepting in the things that we have no authority in, so.
What do you mean?
The whole board is, my understanding, is a quasi judicial board. And we don't have a control over that.
A lot of these issues are with the zoning administrator that's your employee. Like the warning and accepting an incomplete application, that's the zoning administrator's job. And posting of minutes in a timely fashion, that's the, that's not the DRB. They don't do their own-
If you want to submit a complaint in writing, we can deal with that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
The fact that they have a permit at this point, I mean, we can't, I don't believe.
Well, I think it's a real liability. I think, you know, and there was also an issue on another property where, you know, I couldn't believe how this property was flooding during the July 10 storm. And I was like, it can't be, like, that's new development. New development has requirements for how you build in the flood plain. Like it has to be floodproofed, elevated, like in order for us to participate and get funding from FEMA, we have to follow for certain rules. Which means like new development has to be reasonably safe from flooding, elevated, floodproofed, blah, blah, blah. And then I came in and got the permit and the permit was issued without any review of it being in the flood plain. And this, you know, this property owner, you know, has significant damage to their property. And I wonder about the town's liability where, you know, accepting incomplete applications, issuing permits without proper review, not requiring the certifications by professional engineers and architects that are required in the bylaws. And then, you know, people get property damage or worse, you know, life threatening. You know, these people are going to be in a house 10 feet from the top of the Otter Creek, surrounded by water during the flood. So I worry about the town's liability with the decisions that are being made. And, you know, you all point the DRB. So ultimately, it is your responsibility to like oversee the decisions that are made by that board.
If you, if you could submit it in writing, then I think we can address it, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But the driveway permit, too, that was one other thing. All permits are supposed to be inflated prior to the issuance of a permit and that's in our zoning regulations. And they don't have driveway permit. And the driveway permit, I mean, I don't know. They said that they were told they could get one, but there's a requirement to have the driveway 20, well, according to our driveway regulations, there's a requirement that the driveway be located 20 feet from the edge of each property line and 100 feet from another driveway or intersection. And this driveway is, the property line is only 20 feet along the road. And there's also a 50-foot front yard setback on that zone that it only has 20 feet. So I don't know why they didn't require a variance of that. I just don't think it got very thoroughly reviewed according to our bylaws.
Okay. Thank you for coming here and addressing it.
Sure. I'm here hardly, thanks, Jerry.
Right. I think we're up to the next.
All dancing classes.
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Yeah, so I was contacted by the woman who, I think you gave her her name. Yeah, she's been a dance instructor for a long time. I think she's from like right over in New York somewhere.
She originally is from Long Island.
Long Island, yeah. She's really excited. She loves the space. She wants to do dance classes. She has the insurance and she's willing to have waivers signed. So she was just inquiring about whether she could use the space in order to classes. And the rec committee discussed it and we were all in favor.
Does she have a time at this point?
No, I mean, I talked to her, I haven't talked to her in a while. And she, you know, she came over this summer, but she didn't want to like do anything until the fall anyway. So probably sometime in like, you know, September, October, I would think. But when we've had them in the past, I think it's been a fairly popular activity.
Yeah, well, it's fun. Yep.
Consensus? Everybody agreeable? I'm agreeable.
Yes.
Yeah, she is great.
Okay.
And as someone who called to dance in that space recently, that is a fantastic space for dancing. Just.
Well, Ms. Jackie's got her start up there, right?
What?
Was it Ms. Jackie's or Ms. Lorenz started up there?
Oh.
I remember.
It was Ms. Jackie's.
Yeah, she did town to town. I remember her doing it in Proctor, at a town hall in Proctor.
The floor is fantastic and the acoustics are just perfect. I mean.
Yeah, she was pretty excited about this place. Like she like really loved it.
Oh, no. For, for dancing in this space is really, really good.
So the summer camp program did a yoga last week.
I saw that.
Outside at the beach. And I texted Lisa and I said, do you think she would do it like next summer for adults? I think it would be so nice once a week to do yoga over the lake.
To have yoga at the beach?
The yoga at the lake?
That would be fantastic.
Yeah, second guess.
That's just in.
I'd be awesome.
So Lisa asked her and she said she would be interested in it, so I'll pass her information on to you folks.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Yep.
So.
Now on to.
Elephant Lake public beach erosion reduction.
Okay.
So as you guys know, a while back there, we had gotten email from Fitzgerald Associates and they had given us the results of, of their survey and were suggesting or requesting to take actions on the top, the top pole getters. And we did give them a approval. And at this point, we're waiting actually for their preliminary designs, the 60% design.
Don't you have to give him that recommendation for which design to look into? About this select board is going to decide that. That was what we said somewhere.
The select board did decide.
When was that?
Back in, back in June, I believe it was.
I think it was.
So you guys reviewed the designs and decided which one to send?
Yes.
Do you remember that? Right?
Did we? Were you at them?
It might have been the one I missed because I don't.
Oh, I've been watching the agenda because I wanted to be here. Sandy, when I mentioned it to you, you didn't- And Sandy, when I mentioned it to you, you didn't mention that it had already been decided?
It wasn't, they didn't discuss it at a meeting. He, he did, he sent it by email.
But the select board needs to review it and decide.
Well, they're right, sitting right there. You can address them, not me.
Are you looking at the design right now?
Yeah.
You guys looked at it back in June too, when I said he had. He had made his recommendations on the top bulk hitters, and.
Okay.
I told you guys that I had given him okay to do that, and everybody was agreeable.
What meeting was that?
I don't remember the exact meeting, Shannon, but it was back in June, I believe.
Yeah, I think it was a June meeting. We did discuss about giving approval to go ahead with design. Well, this is the first time I've seen this.
So the select board hasn't even seen the designs?
Yeah, no, she's talking about the survey.
Oh, the survey. Oh, okay, but you saw the design?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
But I'm talking about the survey right now.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So at this point, what Fitzgeralds are working on is Zone 1, Option 2, Zone 2, Option 1, and Zone 3 is Option 2.
So that's the part that I wanted to include in the discussion. It wasn't on the agenda in June? So was, you guys made a decision that wasn't on the agenda? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Okay, well, I mean, this is public money, and I think like there needs to be public review of decisions on how it's going to be spent. And I have a comment on how it's going to be spent as somebody who initiated this whole discussion about erosion at the beach many, many months ago, and received, you know, a lot of, you know, negativity from the select board over the years about it. We're finally here, and I'd like to comment on the design, since I did participate in the site visit. And I remember Bruce specifically telling Fitzgerald that, because he was like, oh, we'll tally this up, and we'll just go with whoever had the most tallies, you know, and Bruce told him, no, the select board decides. You know, this group doesn't get to decide. Ultimately, the ultimate decision falls with the select board. So I was like, okay, well, we'll just wait till the select board discusses, but apparently that wasn't warned, and so, um, I think that's a problem. But anyway, so I don't, you know, Design 1, I don't, I don't really remember what the issue was over there, but the driveway that's used as a sidewalk, one of the alternatives was to remove that sidewalk and have the traffic rerouted to the south of the building. And I think that would be a better long-term solution, because a lot of people, you know, have like cut through there and don't pay, or, you know, it's boarded off. But as far as like picking up kids from camp too, you have to go like all the way around the building, and so there's a window to the south that could be used for, you know, people coming in. So basically, like, the path would be taken out, and that would all become like a rain garden with like a little like meandering rural path through it. And that would be area, that would be infiltration zone.
Are we talking Zone 1? The exit?
No. I don't know which one is on.
Yeah, it is Zone 1.
Okay.
If you'd like to see it.
Oh, okay, thanks. I haven't known this in a long time.
It is Zone 1, the walkway, I think. Uh, no, it is 2.
Yeah, it was 2, that's why I passed.
2 is the walkway.
So Zone, um, Zone 1. So Zone 2.
And when you're talking about the south entrance, are you talking about that path? That walking path that you can take behind the lake that takes you into the lake?
No, it would just be like literally when you get to the, when you come down from the parking area where people park.
Yeah.
You just walk that way. So like the fence is here and that little like re-cut through.
They want to change what side of the building people come in.
Yeah, so instead of going all the way around, you would just go to the left, go past the bathrooms, and then there's a window.
Oh, okay. So move the, the entrance on the other side?
Yes.
Yeah, so we wouldn't miss it by like two different entrances. We would have like all traffic slow, go to the south.
Okay.
And I think it warrants consideration for a number of reasons. One, it makes the area where the water is coming from more able to be restored, because if we leave the path there, we're leaving a imperious surface. Yeah, the water runs down the path and onto the beach. So I think it's a better long-term solution to remove the path while we can get grant funds to pay for it. Even if we still continue to use it for a while, it could be like a mulched path or something. It doesn't need to be paved, it'd be more of an impervious surface. But I also think, you know, traffic flow has been an issue down there for a long time, and I think it would make more sense to just have like a shorter entrance, so people can get to the beach faster and, um, yeah. If we use that window, people would have visibility of the actual beach, you know, like the people who work would be able to like see a lot more of the area that they're supposed to be observing. I think there's a lot of like other things, like the rec committee has been discussing like alternatives for the interior space to try to fix some of the issues that have been ongoing for a long time, including deferred maintenance and, you know, a proper bathroom for men, like a changing room, you know, camp currently uses bathroom. And just, you know, there's a number of issues that I think having that traffic flow could help improve. But otherwise, I thought the third one was fine, but the, people were really excited about the fishing pier. And I think going with like large rocks that will be there for a long time and not having something that like, you know, by a muncher that could degrade over time would make a lot of sense, so.
Enough.
So I'd like you to consider taking that, you know, path out.
How about taking the path out?
I, at this point, we have given them instructions, and I'm not going to change that.
Yeah, I don't know that you have the authority to give him instructions, though, that like a decision needs to be made by the select board at a publicly warranted hearing when it's on the agenda. You are not like, you are.
I know I'm not.
A member of a five-board select board, and you have more power than anyone else individually.
When you wanted water on the park, you had no problem saying that because it was popular on your survey, we should put water in the park. But here, when we do another survey, and it's not, one of the results is not the result you want, it's not okay with you.
I don't think that was the result.
Yes, it was the result.
I haven't seen any information that that was the result. I haven't seen.
The result from the survey was these three options that we've, they've been instructed to do.
Well, I mean, there's only like seven people there. I mean, we had 122 people who did the survey, and no, they're not all my friends.
And the goal of this is not to remodel the building. The goal of this is to get, take care of the erosion.
Right, and the best way to take care of the erosion is to remove the impervious surface. That's adding to the erosion and to improve long-term infiltration of the area down there. And if it can be done in a way that also, you know, makes sense for the traffic flow, I don't know why we wouldn't take advantage of, you know, funding that could pay to remove that impervious surface.
Kelly, do you have any thoughts?
See, so one thing, I know a lot of people use that path to go down to like bring kayaks and stuff down. So would that still be?
I mean, one thing they talked about was like having like a door that would open so that people can get like kayaks down there if they need to.
Yes, that's one thing I'm thinking about here.
So there would be like, there would have to be like a fence, but, yeah.
They just seemed like that would kind of cause a bottleneck with that part of it.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I don't see people bringing kayaks, I mean, I've brought kayaks down there plenty of times, and I don't know that it's necessarily like that much closer to go that way.
No, but, you know, because it was a wider area to walk, that's all.
Right, so the other area would have to be like, you know, there, there's a cement path along the building by the sunflowers.
I mean, I don't, I don't know about, it seems like with runoff, maybe I'm incorrect in this, don't understand enough, but that when you look at Zone 3, that mitigates, that will handle the runoff that happens.
Yeah, so, I mean, when we were there, he explained a lot, which actually I was surprised by, because, you know, when I envisioned this project, I envisioned just number three, just like stabilizing the beach. But what Evan did was he like delineated the whole drainage area for the beach and looked into like where the water was coming from. And I was really surprised to find out that it was coming from that forested area, because there's been paths there for a long time, and so much of that has been deforested and compacted. So that slope there where there's the, you know, La Creche Stone, like memorial rock and things, is, that's where all the water is coming from.
Okay.
So not having a large area to create like a proper-sized rain garden there, you know, could affect the long-term, you know, ability to.
But will what he's, what he's, like the rocky swale in Zone 2, and having, and where is it? It's on this side. In Zone 3, having the two basins and the pathway, the two basins in particular, will that mitigate?
I mean, I don't know. It's not like, I mean, it's still going to be a lot better regardless of what we do. I also had concerns about the French drain as well, so I'm glad that wasn't.
It looks like the French drain's not.
What was the one that was decided again? It was Concept 1?
It circled, it circled the, right.
Concept, uh, Zone 1, the French drain was not the one that the survey picked. It was the trench drain and the rain garden.
No, I mean, I think that's definitely like, would be my second choice, like, because the, I was worried about the French drain like requiring long-term maintenance and getting plugged and not functioning over time. But yeah, I think it would be ideal to like remove the path when we can get, you know, grant funds potentially to pay for it, but it could always be done later. But more, I wanted to make sure it was a public process and that it was discussed openly since this is publicly funded, and, you know, I think it's important to make the community aware of these things.
Thank you for bringing that. I will certainly make a note on that. I didn't realize I was saying yes to something that had not been publicly warned, so thank you for bringing that to, to our attention.
Health officer appointment. So Trish Nash's appointment is, her term is run out, or running out. Um, she is willing to do it again. No one else wants it. I don't think we've heard of anybody else that's wanted it.
Thank you.
Have you heard of anybody else, Sandy?
Nobody else, no.
Someone wants to nominate Trish again?
I make a motion to nominate Trish Nash as our town health officer.
So this is a, yeah, so this is, we're recommending the state, the state appoints, but we would recommend.
Oh, we, we have, I'll amend my motion that we recommend Trish Nash as our town health officer to the state.
Right.
Second? How was in favor? Aye.
If we get a second?
I seconded it.
Okay.
Aye. Nay.
Nay?
Can't vote on it then.
The motion fails. Would you care to state some reasons?
Aye. How, was this publicized for that was needed?
Not really.
Can we try again?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's not until the end of September.
Oh, perfect.
Moving on, Recreation Committee resignation. The resident Crispino moved out of town and has resigned from the rec committee, so.
Do you need a motion?
Sandy's posted the position. Do we want to accept the resignation?
Can we do that by consensus?
Yeah.
Town hall boiler replacement. So Ralph presented us with some engineering proposals, which we tabled the matter the last meeting. According to Bill Olson, the chimney is not lined. I don't, maybe we should table this until we have the entire board here.
I think something this big really needs a hurry.
And also, it'd be nice to have maybe Ralph come back and talk about.
Yeah.
I think we should table this, so if everybody's in agreement.
Yes.
Board in September meeting schedule. So the first meeting in September would fall on Labor Day. Sandy's asking if we want to meet on Tuesday, the 5th, I believe it is, not the 6th, as she has it.
Oh, yeah. So it's the 5th, yeah. We kind of have to meet that day, because that's the day the RFPs are open, so.
I don't really have a choice.
We've gotten a few too, it's nice.
Select board comments or concerns?
Well, I'll just bring up, when we close Elephant Lake for the summer, is there like a set date that it closes?
This is, this is the time of year we always close it, because this is like the third weekend. That's when gives, I remember Adam's first year going off to college, you know, they need, they're, they're gone after this week, so.
Well, Adam is, you know, gone.
Exactly.
Right now. We do have a couple of high school students. I don't know if we want to even discuss, if we have enough high school staff. I, I just know that, so the last day was Saturday, that was Adam's day. Nobody came to the lake, because it was 60 degrees. Yesterday was beautiful, gorgeous, and the lake was closed. I don't know if we can maybe say we're going to keep it open until Sunday of that last weekend, and if anyone else has any thoughts on that, but, you know.
I mean, they could still go, just the concessions isn't going to be open.
Right, and, you know, having the use of bathrooms and being able to get them through the gate.
Right.
That's just my personal thing. I'd love to see it open for the full weekend, or not last weekend it's open.
I mean, you can always put it if you can't stop it. You know early enough.
Right.
In the season, because I mean, it's not like, do we ever post what the last date is early on?
Yeah, we always post, like, it's just, we used to, it closed on Saturday, that gives, because Monday, the employees are all gone. And it gives Sunday for them to pull in ropes and stuff, that gives up one day to close things up before everybody leaves, because.
I know that's.
The row crew would just not like swimming and going out and pulling in the ropes. So that's, that's why we started closing it on a Saturday, but. You know, I, I noticed like Proctors close the same weekend.
Okay.
I think Rutland Towns is, went scaled back to limited hours after the Saturday, so it's kind of a traditional, but I do get people want it open earlier and later, it's just a matter of having the employees to.
Exactly.
Run up.
I just thought I would bring that up, because.
I mean, it is a good idea. If we, maybe, I mean, maybe it can just be flexible in the future, depending on who the staff is, we could run it for several more days if they're going to be around.
Just something to consider.
Absolutely.
If, if we have the staff to do.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we get a good, a good, really good summer staff. The concession staff was excellent.
Okay.
They left our ink down there, too.
Well, thank you, thank you for this.
A goodbye in the, in chalk.
That was really nice. I went back there today, and it's still there.
Oh, good.
Very nice. Very nice.
Another business. So FEMA, you guys have met with FEMA. We met with them again this morning.
We have another meeting with them September 6th and then after that will be the onsite, come and look at everything.
Okay. And we have one housing owner that...
Well, now we have two. We got another one today.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah. So that'll be on the agenda for early September, that first meeting in September because there's a, a lot involved for the town. It's not just the homeowners, it's a lot involved for the town.
Okay.
Do you, so, okay, so when I was reading through this, so it goes down, so basically, any structures have to come down? Did I read that?
Yes.
Yes, structures get, it gets demolished and becomes town property. Yeah, so who pays for that cost? Well, it's Vermont Emergency Management and federal and state monies pay for it.
They pay for it, but it would end up, Sandy will have to coordinate it all.
That's okay, it's welcome. And it does take the money. I mean, there's no, as you first mentioned, there's property taxes.
You lose the property tax money.
Right.
It becomes like a town space, so it would be, we would insure it, we would have to mow it, maintain it.
Maintain it.
Okay.
I recall Clarendon did it for Irene. It was one of the houses near Reynolds Auto. You remember that house that was almost? They bought that one out. It's a, it's a, at least, it's like a year-long process, maybe 18 months. It's, it's a long process. So the one year Reynolds Auto, the one that just had a fire and that has been just dilapidated for, since Irene? Uh, no, no, because they had to take it down. Okay, so I just don't remember when it got taken down because there's, there's how it's been, because I drive by it every day. Yeah. So, yeah, we would, it would, they sent a, a package to the homeowners and we'll discuss this all in September, but they provided a estimated budget that it would cost that we would submit and it's like $260 something thousand.
Wow.
It would include surveys and legal fees and it's, and then today, we, I found another one, another, for one.
For one?
And then just today, somebody contacted me about another one over in East Wallingford to do a buyout. The first one is the old Evening Song Farm.
Oh, gotcha.
And the second one is on 155, I think, near the bridge.
Gotcha.
Okay.
The one right there by the bridge? Okay.
That. I don't, I, I don't know. I mean, the town has got to agree to do all this as well. So it's just, then it could be, I don't know, I mean, there was a suggestion, one, the Evening Song, it could be a dog park. I don't know. If we can do a fence, I don't, I'm kind of thinking we couldn't do a fence once we... That's what they wanted to do with the, with the property that ended up getting bought by... Yes. A tax sale. They want a dog park there, too. I don't know if you can do a fence once you buy something like that out, so... It sounds like structure-free.
Yeah.
And I would think liability, be pretty familiar with the way that property looks right now.
Okay.
I wouldn't think liability-wise you would, if we were taking it on.
Well, if it's flood zone land in the way you're getting flooded, is what's happening.
It makes sense to not maybe have a residence there, but at the same time, it, it becomes our problem, so...
Well, it's something we can definitely discuss in September.
Discuss and think about, so...
Yes.
I think that covers it for tonight.
Then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.